Back to the Citrus Heights Planning Commission meeting of March ninth, two thousand twenty-two. It is good to be with you all. The time is seven o'clock and I will open the meeting. Tonight, Tom, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Planning Secretary, would you please take the role?
Commissioner Engel.
Here.
Commissioner Magnavowski.
Here.
Commissioner Nishimura.
Here.
Commissioner Turner Mike is absent tonight. Commissioner Sheila.
Here.
Vice Chair Van Duker.
Here.
Chair Flowers.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. And first item on the consent has the Consent Calendar to approve the minutes for the January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two minutes. And has everyone had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes? Any changes or additions? Okay, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the minutes for the January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two meeting.
I second.
Planning Secretary?
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Minutes approved.
And Madam Chair, in the, now that we're live, we can just say all in favor as opposed to before we did a roll call because we didn't know if we're online, we need to do it individually. So after each item, you can just ask all in favor and any opposed.
Wonderful. Okay, we talked about that and that'll work, okay? Okay. And are there any speaker or non-agenda items this evening?
I need to read public comments.
Oh, it's gonna be, that's okay.
Item number five, which is public comment. I'm s- That's okay. Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, members of the audience may address the commission on any agenda item within the commission of, the jurisdiction of the commission or on any agenda item. Those wishing to speak on non-agenda items will be called upon at the beginning of the meeting. Those wishing to speak for or against the agenda item will be called upon after the presentation by the City Planning Division and applicant for that agenda item.
Thank you. Are there any speaker or non-agenda items this evening?
I think we're good.
Okay, next agenda item, please.
Uh, that's regular calendar and that is resolution to recognize outgoing Planning Commissioner Tom Sheila.
And it is my great honor to make this proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights Planning Commission, honoring Mr. Thomas Sheila for his service as Planning Commissioning, commissions, Chair, excuse me. In January two thousand twenty-one, Thomas Sheila was elected as the Planning Commission Chair. Tom sat as the chairperson during the COVID-nineteen pandemic and gracefully transitioned to remote Planning Commission meeting, ensuring the public was able to participate in local government actions. Whereas Tom ran the Planning Commission meetings efficiently and effectively during his tenure as Chair, whereas he thoroughly and thoughtfully chaired meetings which considered a variety of development applications, including the American River Collegiate Academy, the Pioneer Baptist Church, and the expansion of the Sunrise Boulevard Animal Hospital and East Lawn Cemetery. Whereas Tom sat as the chairperson during the development of the Sunrise Tomorrow specific plan, which will guide the city's future fiscal stability by bringing twenty-two resident, twenty-two hundred, excuse me, residential units, nine hundred and sixty thousand square feet of office space, four hundred and eighty to, eighty hotel rooms, four hundred and fifty thousand square feet of community institutional uses, three hundred and twenty thousand square feet of retail space, and approximately twenty-five acres of open space into the city's central business core. And whereas Thomas Sheila built cooperative relationships with the Planning Commissioners and will be remembered for his ability to respond to questions from the Planning Commission with accurate, thorough, and concise answers. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Planning Commission of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby commend Thomas Sheila for his service to the City of Citrus Heights and his impactful contributions to the Planning Commission. We thank you, Tom.
Well, thank you for all those gracious words. I hope I lived up to all that. It was certainly my honor to, to serve as chairman and I've said it before, even to our neighborhood association. I think one of the real things that this planning commission can really be proud of, the Sunrise Tomorrow project and amongst the other projects certainly that you talked about. So I'm really excited to see that project begin and moving forward and hopefully seeing some developers really start lining up. So thank you very much for the very, very kind words. I appreciate it very much.
You're very welcome. Planning Secretary, next agenda item, please.
That is going to be item five B, General Plan Annual Progress Report. State law requires that all cities and counties submit their legislature, submit to their legislative, legislative bodies the annual progress report on the status of the general plan and progress of its implementation. The city's general plan contains sixty-six goals to guide overall city development as a basis of for local government decision-making and to maintain the city's commitment to transparency, accountability. These goals and policies are analyzed to serve, serve as the guiding action to achieve overall visitation, vision of the community. Project Planner Eric Singer.
There we go. Thank you very much. Good evening, Commissioners, Chair. So as Stacy mentioned, we're going to be discussing the general plan, excuse me, annual progress report for the year of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, just a brief recap, obviously, our general plan is our guiding document for all development decisions within the city. The APR is highlighting any significant progress that we've made towards specific goals outlined within that document and most importantly, provides an update to the state on our progress towards our housing element goals. Essentially, it's our report card of how we did in two thousand twenty-one to achieving goals that are outlined within our general plan. So from a housing perspective, both in terms of production as well as entitlements, we split this into two categories. Obviously, the entitlements being the number of housing applications that we've received and the number that were approved. So there was only one application received during two thousand twenty-one. No applications were approved and I'm not sure if you all will remember, but the annual progress report from two thousand twenty actually indicated that we had not received any housing applications during that period. Could probably attribute some of that to the pandemic. But on the flip side of that, part of the good news is looking at the building permits that were issued over the course of two thousand twenty-one. We actually did see quite a bit of production in terms of the number of permits issued and the number of housing units granted certificates of occupancy. So the interesting thing about two thousand twenty-one is it also happened to be a year in which the housing element, we ended one housing element cycle that lasted from two thousand thirteen through two thousand twenty-one, midway through two thousand twenty-one. And the current housing element cycle that goes through two thousand twenty-nine actually began on May fifteenth of last year. So the way that we report this information, as you might have seen in the staff report, had to be bifurcated into those two periods of time essentially. That being the case, the total number of units that were issued permits over the course of the entire year were fifty-four housing units and seventy-five housing units were issued certificates of occupancy, allowing people to actually move in and start living in their new homes. Looking at the milestone development projects, just kind of running through the list, a lot of these are familiar to you already having either sat on the commission and, and you know, made decisions on these projects and/or seen the subsequent development over the course of the last few years. So first off, Mitchell Farms in two thousand twenty-one, they issued fifty-three building permits to begin construction out of the two hundred and sixty total that have been entitled for the site. And sixty-one units were issued certificates of occupancy. The disparity between the numbers there is obviously some building permits might have been issued over the course of two thousand twenty that were then issued certificates of occupancy in two thousand twenty-one. With the North Ridge Grove subdivision, that was a site, that subdivision issued six certificates of occupancy in two thousand twenty-one. The Sunrise Point Affordable Housing Project that was entitled in two thousand nineteen actually was issued building permits to start the construction of their forty-seven unit multifamily affordable housing project in two thousand twenty-one. And the Fair Oaks Senior Housing Project was, as it was approved in two thousand twenty, it was actually issued its building permits last year as well for a hundred and eight out of the a hundred and ten affordable senior housing units. Last but not least, one of the kind of crowning achievements of the Planning Department in particular is the Permit Ready Accessory Dwelling Unit Program that was launched midway through two thousand twenty-one, providing eighteen different ADU plans or accessory dwelling unit programs to prospective applicants free of charge. These ADU plans come pre-approved by our Building Division, so meaning a streamlined, streamlined permit process, you know, hopefully significant savings for any interested ADU owner, in turn, creating more housing opportunities within single-family zoned neighborhoods. Chair Flowers actually very eloquently described all of the achievements outlined within the Sunrise Tomorrow specific plan. So that actually helps to kind of breeze through this particular slide. But very importantly, the Sunrise Tomorrow specific plan was adopted in November of two thousand twenty-one and this is a huge milestone in helping to redevelop that site and guide the future economic growth of the city. Looking at some of the infrastructure goals that were outlined in two thousand twenty-one, our city engineer Leslie Blonquist is available if you have any particular questions about these programs, but I have some just quick blurbs. So the residential street resurfacing, so nineteen residential roadways were resurfaced in two thousand twenty-one and the city collaborated with Sacramento County to resurface the shared roadways of Kenneth Avenue and a portion of Madison. The LED streetlight conversion, over fif- excuse me, five hundred and fifty streetlights were converted to energy-efficient models, thereby reducing the city's streetlight electrical usage by nearly eight percent and reducing the city's overall monthly streetlight expenditures by over thirty thousand dollars a year. The local roadway safety program, which was adopted July twenty-second of last year. The LRSP, as it's known, as identifies emphasis areas to guide ongoing safety evaluation of the city's transportation network. The LRSP is particularly focused on identifying safety issues affecting all roadway users, improving safety at specific high-crash locations and recommending safety improvement measures. The LRSP is required in order for the city to apply for funding through the state's Highway Safety Improvement Program. Last but not least, the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail, another huge development in providing multi-use trail access for many residents of the city and connecting to the larger regional trail network. Project made great strides in two thousand twenty-one, renamed from the Electric Greenway and the project design has been completed with construction anticipated to begin this year in two thousand twenty-two. Last but not least, looking at the public safety element. So the Rental Housing Inspection Program, which our police department launched in two thousand nineteen, to date has looked at over thirty-five hundred housing units and identified over forty-five hundred violations. In two thousand twenty-one alone, even though they were drastically affected by the pandemic, over three hundred housing units were inspected and four of those units were actually rehabilitated so that they could be let out to new tenants. It's just another, you know, continued effort on the part of our police department to help ensure that these units are not creating unsafe living conditions for members of the community. So this is the staff recommended action and I'm available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. The Commissioners have any questions or clarifying questions or comments for this agenda item at all?
One thing I was reminded Eric when reading through the report was not only the, the programs that you cited, but also the balcony inspection program, looking at balconies, which, you know, in driving around Citrus Heights, sometimes I'll look at a balcony on an apartment building or whatever else and I'm thinking, geez, that doesn't, that doesn't look too healthy. Something's, something's going on there. So I think that's a great program. Obviously, there's been, you know, balcony collapses across the country with people having parties on the balcony, whatever else, and there's catastrophic situations. So I think that's a great program also. So kudos to the, kudos to the staff.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I would like to add, honestly, the city has done a lot of work. It's, it's pretty cool. But question about like the ADU goals, so there's a hundred ADU, the goal is to have like a hundred ADUs by two thousand twenty-nine. So I was just wondering, maybe Allison is going to answer that in her presentation. Will SB nine kind of affect that goal and what if we don't reach it? What happens?
Well, so like anything within our regional housing needs allocation, the numbers that are put forth are, you know, obviously, goals that we have to achieve our baseline numbers of, of single-family units produced. ADUs are, you know, definitely a big component of that. If anything, SB nine would hopefully aid in the development of ADUs on a lot of these single-family zoned properties, whether that be by allowing for further splits of properties that would normally only be allowed, you know, a single-family dwelling and then an ADU now being allowed, you know, maybe even up to six units, considering that they will allow by right duplexes and ADUs in addition to those duplexes. The hundred units was based off of a projection that we had seen from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, I believe, at least a hundred percent increase in the number of accessory dwelling unit applications for building permits and extrapolating that over the course of the two thousand twenty-one to twenty-nine housing element period. On the conservative end, the estimate was that we were going to get about a hundred ADU applications with also the introduction of the Purdue program. We're hoping that that can very much aid in development of more of those units as well. Thank you.
Wonderful. Anyone else? Okay. Any public comment? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the item.
I move that we move to recommend the City Council approve the two thousand twenty-one General Plan Annual Progress Report and direct staff to forward the report to the appropriate state agencies in accordance with Governmental Code Section six five four zero zero.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Thank you. Motion passed. Next item, please.
That is going to be item five C, Determination of General Plan Consistency, Sayonara Properties. Review and determination of the disposition of twelve city-owned properties along Sayonara Drive in compliance with the general plan as per Government Code five, six five four zero two. Project Planner Allison Bermudez.
Good evening, Commissioner. It's so wonderful to see you and be here in person. I don't like doing presentations on Zoom, just so you know. So this project is quite exciting tonight. We have some properties on Sayonara that the city owns and we are getting towards a place where we will be disposing or selling those properties. So to make that happen, your body is required to review the general plan goals for that property to make sure that it's consistent, that we transfer this property to a new owner. So tonight's action, we're going to make findings required under the Government Code six five four oh two to support the disposition of the properties on Sayonara and this will be for the development of affordable housing. So as you might recall, the city had a redevelopment agency at one time and in two thousand eight and through two thousand ten, Sayonara was determined to be blighted, have several blighted properties. So the agency purchased fifteen parcels on Sayonara. Eventually, on those parcels, all the housing units were demolished. Some were vacant, some had tenants. So it was quite a process to acquire those properties, relocate tenants. And we ended up demolishing the units. We adopted a replacement plan, always intended to replace the units with new living units that weren't blighted and were not substandard. Took a little bit of time to get this project going for many reasons, but fifteen parcels of land, three of them we have used already, one became a park. So we brought some activity space to Sayonara. Two other parcels were converted into the Sayonara Center for the children of the area. So that leaves these twelve remaining parcels. And, and to kick that off, to get housing in there, it was a little challenging. We met with several developers, but it wasn't something that they were jumping up and down to do, that jumping up and down to acquire. They were individual parcels. They're required to be affordable housing. So there was a lot of, there was a lot of struggles, but we finally have found a partner in Habitat for Humanity who is interested in bringing a project to the Boulevard, to the Sayonara Drive. So we're quite excited for that. But in order to get that rolling and kick off, we will need to transfer the land to them. But we would do need your approval to do that and this will go before the City Council later this month. So just to remind you which properties they are in Sayonara, these are the land, the overall project areas and the three on the lower right-hand side of the screen are the ones that have been used already with the park and the community center. And so the parcels, there's eight on the north side of Sayonara and then the five on the south side. The general plan for the property is medium-density residential, so that can have multifamily units. As you recall, they were fourplexes on the street, one eightplex and the rest were fourplexes. And so it is a high-dense housing area. The general plan has several policies talking about housing, specifically twenty-seven point one, which was continuing to implement strategies to redevelop Sayonara Drive, that Sunrise to Lailana Drive. Since cityhood, Sayonara Drive always caused a lot of police activity for several reasons and that's when it was determined to be blighted and that's when the redevelopment agency stepped up. And we have brought a lot of great things to Sayonara and improved the street. There's new lighting, reduced the crime, reduced the calls for service in the area through a great partnership with the police department. So things have greatly improved. But now we do need to get the housing units back to the street. So the motion tonight is to adopt a resolution finding that the disposition of these properties is compliant with the general plan. And just another side note, tomorrow night, we will be before the City Council presenting on a study session of Sayonara Drive on the potential project with Habitat and we'll just be looking for their feedback on the type of housing they like on the street, how many units and so forth. So that is tomorrow night on the council agenda. They're not making any decisions tomorrow, but we are all just kind of talking about the project to get their feedback. It's been several years since we've had discussions regarding Sayonara, so we just kind of want to bring it back to the surface. So that is tomorrow night. The action that they'll be taking to dispose of the property will be later in March.
Okay, thank you very much, Allison. Are there any clarifying questions from the Commissioners? Okay, very good. Any public comment? All right, may I have a motion to approve this agenda item, please?
I will make a motion to adopt Resolution number two oh two, two dash oh two, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Citrus Heights, California, adopting its report and certain findings required under California Government Code Section six five four oh two for the disposition of certain vacant properties on Sayonara Drive.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Okay, agenda passed. Next item, please.
That is going to be item five D, SB nine update by Allison Bermudez.
All right, Commissioners, thank you. One more time for me tonight. Okay, I want to talk about SB nine. We talked a little briefly about it at one of the meetings last year. It is a new law that went into effect January of this year. Really, it was signed, I'm gonna say September of last year, so it was very quick. There was law discussion leading up to it, but then Governor signed it towards the end of the bill period. So we had a very short window to kind of wrap ourselves around SB nine and get it implemented. So we did do that. After it was signed, we took action and did go the City Council under urgency ordinance to adopt the pieces of SB nine that we needed to adopt to be in compliance. So typically, when we have changes like this, they would come before you for review first and then go the City Council. But in this case, it was done as an urgency ordinance because of the short window that we had. So I just, we wanted to make sure we came back to you to kind of bring you up to speed as to what happened and what SB nine is. So SB nine is one of the many, many bills that were signed trying to stir and increase housing to what the housing crisis has been going on. And this was another form that they took. And really, basically what it is, it was eliminating many of the processes that we typically would see through planning when someone, someone wants to build or subdivide property, specifically related to single-family zoning properties. So if you have a property that's in a single-family zone, the law does allow a second home on that same property. There are certain conditions that we'll go over, but kind of in general, so a single-family zone property can actually have two single-family homes on it. And then on the flip side of that, single, a single-family lot can be subdivided into two lots and where typically we would go through a mapping process, it would come before you for review and approval. The SB nine eliminates that, so converts that to ministerial actions, meaning that they file an application with us. We review it, make sure it checks all the boxes and then it's basically approved. There's no hearing. So it's, the idea of that was to make it a quicker, less cumbersome process so the splits could happen more rapidly. So SB nine, excuse me, is actually two, two parts. The land division creating two lots out of one and then the other side of it where you can actually construct two homes on the one single property. And you can use these in conjunction with each other. So if you have one lot, you can split it and then put two houses on each lot. And so I think if you saw the news media, a lot that was talked about last year, it would say single-family zoning really allows four houses. There are some qualifying, qualifying statements for the properties that they have to meet in order to qualify for it. They have to be a single-family zone. So for in Citrus Heights, that's our RD one through RD five zoning districts. The property can be vacant or it can have an existing house, as I mentioned. Properties that would be excluded from allowing SB nine, if they have an easement on them, like a conservation easement, we do have some properties that are under conservation easement. They may not be converted into housing and then if they have a historic designation. There are some other conditional exclusions, properties that have hundred-year floods, flood zone, which we have quite a bit and then properties in the floodway, there are certain things they'd have to do in order to use, utilize SB nine. There was also some protections for rental housing built into the bill. One of them is if you have an SB nine property and, or you use SB nine, that you can't, none of the homes that you create can be used as a short-term rental. Some areas we're finding that people are wanting to do that and then use, putting them on Airbnb and the idea is to provide housing, permanent housing, not vacation rentals or short-term rentals. So that was built into the law. And then there are some provisions, if you have an existing unit on the property, about how it can be altered or demolished to accommodate SB nine. Specifically, one that's important is if you have a rental unit on a property and you want to utilize SB nine, you can't demolish that rental unit to use SB nine because you're eliminating someone's home. So there are some provisions like that that are built into the bill as well. It does, does allow for the city, their agency to have objective standards and we've talked about objective standards before, but they really are clear and concise standards that are kind of either or, like if you must do this, you must do this. There's no subjectivity to them. So we do have a couple minor objective standards that we built into our adoption. So we have two new entitlement processes before us. One is the lot split, as I talked about, which we're calling the urban lot split. So our code was modified to have a new process for urban lot splits. And then our zoning code was updated then with the new two-unit development, which added the section that complied with SB nine that would allow the two single-family homes. Just to go over some of the highlights of the urban lot split side of SB nine, it is ministerial. As I mentioned, it would be review and approved at staff, would not become before the hearing body for approval. Properties may be split regardless of size. So if you're familiar with our residential zoning, like an art traditional RD five zoning, which is our, one of our single-family zones, it has the minimum lot size of five thousand square feet. To split that, you would have to have ten thousand square feet in traditional terms. They'd have each lot that would meet the minimum standard. Um, under SB nine, there is no minimum lot size. So if you have a five thousand square foot RD five zone, you actually could split it into two and have two twenty-five hundred square foot lots. So very different than So very different than what we're used to in, in the planning zoning review world. The one thing to that is it has to be at least twelve hundred square feet, so that, they did put a lowest, it has to be at least twelve hundred square feet. The lots also must be, that you create must be of equal size or close to equal size. So you can't, if you have a ten thousand square foot lot, you can't make a twelve hundred square foot lot and then have one larger lot. You'd have to cut it pretty equally, or sixty forty is the largest they'll let it go. There is also no dedication for sidewalk or improvements, and as if you're, remember when we review parcel maps and bring them before you, many times they come with conditions of sidewalk improvements, lights, things like that. And we cannot have those requirements on SB nine lot splits. We can require the traditional utility easements. You can't do the lot split repeatedly, so you can't have one lot split into two and then come back next year and do it again. You get one chance. The owner must sign an affidavit that they are going to live on the property. So if you're going to use, utilize the urban lot split, you must reside on the property, at least in one of the units. And then two units would be maximum per lot. This would include ADUs and junior ADUs. So what that means, if you have a single lot with a house and you're going to split it, you can put another unit by the existing house, and then the new lot can have two houses. But if you have a single family unit with an ADU, you can't add another home to that because that would be three. So we're, our code only allows two per lot. It does also reduce the required setbacks. Typically, our standard single family zone setbacks are five feet. If you recall, ADUs had that reduced setback down to four feet. They also did put that on the SB nine properties, so the setbacks are at four feet. We talked about the, no demolition or alteration depending on who resides in the home. You can, if you're going to be a resident of the property, you can demolish the unit and rebuild it. And then we can't have you, we can't require any correction to nonconforming situations. So if there's been something on the property that no longer meets the zoning standards, typically when you come in to improve the property, we have you correct that, let's say your setbacks or something like that are not compliant with the code, and you're coming in for a permit, we'll have you correct those nonconforming standards. With SB nine, we can no longer enforce that correction. Our objective standards we put on the lot splits is we did note that the net lot area is exclusive of the creekside setbacks. As you know, we are very protective of our flood zone to protect the community and properties. So the net area is exclusive of the creekside setbacks. And then we did maintain our standard that we have, that is in our current zoning code today, that the parcels that you create through SB nine must have street frontage. They must front directly on the street, or they at least can have access to them over one additional lot. So we have a lot of larger properties, maybe a long narrow property, and so they're going to split that in half. The back does not have access to the street, but the front property does. So the back one would access across that front property to get to the street. We would allow that, but we would not allow you to cross multiple properties to get to the street. And I'll show you a slide of that in just a second. So here's some examples of how you could lot split under SB nine. The first one being, there's one existing property. Thank goodness in this Allison's world of drawing, it's kind of in a nice location. So you can split it right down the middle and get your nice fifty, fifty sized lot. And then you can put a new dwelling to the back, and then the new lot that you created could get two dwellings. The one in the middle is a vacant lot, so the front lot, you'd split it horizontally. The front lot, you could get your two units. You could have that access road that I spoke of to the back, so that back property where in this case could be a duplex. They're crossing that front property to get to their rear property, so they're only crossing one property. That's, that's our objective standard that we included. And then the other one shows an existing dwelling that had an ADU, so they did split that one as well. The ADU would count as that property's second unit, so the two units would be on the back property. The front property would not get a, a third unit. And then the other part of SB nine was that two unit development, and this would be either after you use SB nine lot split, or if you just have a property, you want to add a second home, it'd be the two unit development. Again, this is a ministerial action. There'd be no hearing. We can require utility easements but no other improvements. It does allow the maximum of two per lot. Again, this one allows that four foot side and rear setbacks, has the same conditions about alteration or demolition and replacement. It does require that we allow, have at least one parking space. And that also, it does allow for that duplex or attached units. And our objective standards we added for the two unit developments are that parking. We identified the size of the parking space and that the placement of the new units must meet the creekside setbacks. Examples of how this would be, so this would be ones that are not, were not splitting, but they're just existing properties. An existing dwelling could add one more existing dwelling. That does, in this case, it's a detached dwelling. The middle one's also a vacant lot. They could add two new dwellings. They could be attached side by side. They could be separated, but you would have two new dwellings. And the other one, there's an existing dwelling, and they already have an ADU, so they would not be eligible to add a second unit or another unit because they already have the ADU. And so you might think, well, if you have an ADU, what's the difference between ADU and the two unit development? So ADUs are a great way to go for a couple reasons. They have their own set of regulations and they have fee reductions. So it's, there's a lot less fees collected on ADU versus an existing dwelling. ADUs are limited in size where the two unit developments, there's no size restrictions. And if you have a property with a home, you can add the ADU. And then we also allow the junior ADU, which is that internal accessory unit that's internal to the main house. The law did allow for denial in one situation, that's the chief building official could, could deny the project really, but it really takes that preponderance of evidence that would be, have really adverse impacts. So SB nine really did limit what we can review, very specific on things that we must allow. And then a lot of parts of SB nine are, don't cover our everyday situations. So we are adapting and learning about SB nine as things come up. So what I call this is very fluid. This is how we have interpreted SB nine, and when you look at other jurisdictions, they may have different interpretations. So we look to the state or some other agencies for guidance as things kind of get flushed out when these new significant bills come into play. But at this point, this is how our code was adopted and how we're, how we have been interpreting it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Are there provisions or restrictions on building up?
There are not, yeah. So our standard zoning would apply for height limit. So the standard thirty foot height limit would still be allowed. So you could have another home built on the property as that two unit development, other one, and it could be thirty feet high at four feet setback.
And that's through SB nine, or is it regulated by the city?
Through SB nine. So we do have a website that has information on SB nine, includes our ordinance and some frequently asked questions. So there is a dedicated webpage for that available on the website. And as I just mentioned, there's still a lot of questions, ordinance in the law, the way it was written is leaving a lot of questions, but we are working through them and keeping the website updated as much as we can as we, if things shift. Excited next week at the conference to go to an SB nine workshop to hear how other people are doing it. But even in our local areas, there are different interpretations of SB nine. This was presented to the council in December, and they like, they were a bit shocked, to say it differently. So it is something new and it's very challenging, and, but we're working through it. Happy to answer any questions if I can on, on it.
Wonderful. Thank you, Allison. Any questions for Allison? Yes?
I guess it's a question and it's sort of more of a comment, frankly. And I realize there's not a whole bunch you can do, but basically if you're still continuing talking. It troubles me that there is no, that, that the split can't be compelled to put in sidewalks and lights and whatever else. I mean, I'm looking at safety. I'm looking at handicap access. We just got, you know, we're still finishing up the Mariposa Safe Streets project to try to, to try to give children a safe way to get to school. And yet, you know, you could potentially have people splitting lots, hopscotching down the street. And if there were no sidewalks, there won't be any sidewalks. There won't be any lights and whatever else. That, that just seems, I mean, it obviously is, ultimately it's going to fall on the jurisdiction to basically pick up that tab, I guess, is what it. And so like I say, it's, it's a comment more than anything else. But given the opportunity to voice that concern, I, I think it's not a small one in terms of access for the handicap and, and safety.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do.
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Go ahead.
I have two. JADU, that's connected, is that correct?
It's internal to the main house, so that's like you have your master bedroom, maybe turn it into an independent unit.
All right. And then, just, just for my information, replaced in place regarding the demo. So it used to be where if somebody demoed, then they could replace on that footprint, right? So with this, they could in fact demo and increase, well, they could have the main house still at the same size and then an ADU added on to it, correct, without that being an issue?
They could. What that's referring to is if you have a unit that's maybe nonconforming and you want to rebuild it, that we have to allow you to remove it, but put it back in the same spot and remain nonconforming.
Okay, okay. And then my last question was just, I'd be curious, like if, if a resident was to come in and were not really that familiar with SB nine and wanted to say, they wanted to do a TUD, does the city help to educate them? Or do they need to know what they're asking for when they go in?
That's a good question. I don't think I've been in that situation, but we would let them know. I have, we have offered people that have inquired about lot splits, there is the SB nine lot split option, or there is a two unit. So it's not a secret. I mean, I don't think we would keep it from anyone.
Yeah, I just wonder if somebody would maybe not know and apply for the wrong thing, you know, and.
Yeah, more or less, I will talk to them about ADUs versus a single family because there's somewhat advantages, but it depends on their long term, what they want to do. If they want to do an ADU, it's obviously faster, less expensive, because they get a lot of fee waivers. So if they're just looking for an additional unit on the property for more living space, I would push them towards the ADU route. But if it's something in the future that they want to sell off a piece of the property,
Right.
then there would not be an ADU. You wouldn't be able to do that because the fees were not paid on that unit.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Commissioner Martin asking you another question?
Yes, thank you. So I mean, pretty like dramatic changes, Allison. Have there been any applications or any kind of interest as, as well as kind of want to gauge, how do you think it's going to impact the city? Will a lot of people try to go for it? Have there been?
We get, we have had a lot of inquiries. We had people starting, probably right after the bill was signed and starting to inquire. So that's one reason we took such quick action, because there was a lot of people having interest. And we wanted to get our objective standards adopted, because if we didn't have those in place, we wouldn't have them when January one. So we, that was one. So we have had a lot of interest, formal applications. We have one official application for the lot split and about four or five that are going to be submitting. And that's obviously been the most popular portion of this is the lot split. I haven't had any on the two units building the second home.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Allison. Okay, next item, please.
That is going to be city attorney training by Ryan Jones.
Good evening, Madam Chair and the rest of the planning commissioners. I don't want to take a huge amount of time since we're at the end of the meeting, but there's important things we thought we would, or I would update the commission on. It's something we want to do usually annually as an update, give you some, some refresher on a few key concepts, and you'll see what those are. Those are, you know, kind of your role, Brown Act, meeting operations, which I think is important with regard to due process rights as we're dealing with members of the public who come in and make certain requests of the commission. Ethics we'll touch on. I want to also mention a few things about the Public Records Act and the idea of communications you have in writing could very well be disclosed to the public. And I put land use one on one on there. I'm actually not going to cover that. That's about general plan and specific plans and, you know, the, the MAP Act, things that I think you're all somewhat familiar with. But I asked Stacy if she would email these slides to all of you after this presentation, so you'd have it just for your own awareness. And if you want to certainly communicate with me directly about it, or with Casey, who's certainly a planning expert, we can, we can help you out there. So in terms of the role of the planning commission, you know, I think it's important to talk about what your jurisdiction is over, what kind of things you're going to have. And I, this really falls into two main categories. You either have a legislative action, which is adoption of the zoning code or mending the zoning code, and, and adopting the general plan with its respective elements or specific plans when they come up. And then quasi judicial matters is what we, we call it, and that's, that's approving CUPs or variances and the like. What the commission doesn't have jurisdiction over is things usually with money and funds and then city property, those types of matters. When it comes to those two big groups that do come before the commission, you know, even though legislative actions are really important, they don't have as many, we'll call them legal consequences that I'm concerned about, you know, certainly a specific plan has a lot of ramifications for the community, but it's the quasi judicial actions where you're making a decision with an appellate here. That, that has some due process considerations that I, I'd like to go over a little bit with the commission. When it comes to your interaction with staff, I mean, we're here for you. We, we, we serve at the, at your pleasure and we want to help you out. We, we help set the agenda as our, our planning manager does. We also listen to your requests at the end of the meeting, or when you want to contact us and say we'd like to have something come up on the agenda. We're open to that, but there's just that bullet point. Be, be careful of the, you know, considerations of the impact on staff. There may be only, we may have a plan of what items we want to come up, and it may be something that if you have a recommendation, it may take us a little while before we actually bring it to, to the commission. So you're familiar with the Brown Act. We talk about this all the time, right? This is a transparency law. It's been around for a number of years and it has had some modifications. But the general concept is you're a legislative body, just like the city council, and your decisions, your deliberation needs to be done in front of the public. And so we want to be careful about what that means, what is open to the public, because there's a lot with the Brown Act that people can accidentally violate. And there's also things you can do that you may think, oh, I can't do, like, can I talk to another commissioner? Sure you can. You just can't talk to a majority of commissioners about an item. So we'll talk a little bit about that. So a legislative body is, is you all, and it's got to be open and, and public. Man, that is really hard to read. I apologize for the smallness of, of the slides, but what I wanted to get at was a meeting is any time a majority is together and talking about city business. A meeting can only happen when it's agendized. When Stacy puts out that posted agenda, that's the time we can deliberate. So if you're all at the rotary crab feed together, sitting at the same table, you are allowed to be there. That is a, a public event open to the public, but you can't talk about city business. And, and or, nor does it look good. You know, people might say, why is a majority of the city council or a majority of the planning com- And nor does it look good. You know, people might say, why is a majority of the city council or a majority of the planning commission sitting together at these events? So be careful about those kinds of things. I also put at the bottom about replying all. So sometimes Casey or members of staff will send an email out to all of you. We can do that. We're allowed to communicate with you outside a meeting to give you information and provide you education maybe for an upcoming meeting. What we don't want to have is a deliberative exchange. So we don't want, you can maybe reply all to say, I have some questions about this. And you can ask staff, you can ask Allison about SB nine. There's no problem with you individually talking to her about your thoughts, concerns. But what we don't want is an exchange with multiple members or you going back and forth about what you want to do. I'd vote that down or however you, if that makes sense, right? So what is not a meeting? I mentioned individual conversations and contacts, for example, with the public. You could certainly meet with the public individually about projects, maybe even some that are coming up on the agenda. So if there's a housing project that's about to come before you and that housing, that developer wants to meet with you, there's no problem with that. Now, you don't have to. There's no obligation as a commissioner to meet with members of the public. But usually that's good governance, right, to exchange with your public. But another careful, what I would caution is, and we're going to get to it in a minute, is you don't want to commit to anything, right? We're not going to prejudge a project. I'll hear you out, thank you for your time, but it's not, I'm either in favor or against that. I think you want to remain neutral until you're here before this body. Couple of exceptions about what is not a meeting, you know, conferences like the League of California Cities do events, that's fine. Things that are open to social and ceremonial ceremonies, like we talked about the rotary events or a lighting of the Christmas tree at, you know, at City Hall, those types of things are certainly open for you all to be here. So social media presents a unique ramification of the Brown Act. And we've been trying to deal with this, legislators trying to deal with this. And that is, we want people to be advocates and active social media folks with their public. It's a good way to coordinate with the public and find out what their thoughts are. What is problematic is if you make your opinions on social media that are hard to come back from because you've already said how you're going to vote. That would be problematic. The other is if a multiple of you are engaging on social media and you see each other's posts, you're also kind of having a meeting. There's a new law called SB nine nine two that now says you cannot comment on a fellow commissioner's social media post relating to city business. Because you're allowed to make comments. If you said, hey, please come and come to our next planning commission meeting. Or you can even express thoughts you have. Just it's careful to not make it a firm opinion. You can do that, but if one member posts something, another member can't even do an emoji with a thumbs up or alike. The law is very clear, they do not want you commenting or having any kind of trail or retweeting anything that another commissioner does. And it doesn't have to be a majority, just one on the other. So be mindful of that. So also when it comes to things that are on the agenda, we're only in this meeting going to talk about agendized items. We have an open forum for the public comment where they can come up and talk to you about anything related to the city. But what I, what sometimes I'm listening to is, do we ever get on tangents where we start talking about something that's not on the agenda? That'd be improper because the public wasn't notified of that. So if we're talking about SB nine and all of a sudden we start talking about a housing project we think it implicates is, right? Let's talk about Mitchell Farms and all of a sudden now we're talking about that. I would, you know, kind of politely rein the commission back in and say, look, that's not on the agenda. Let's stick to what we're supposed to do. Unfortunately, this commission doesn't have, you know, a problem with that. But if I did, if it happened, we'd be mindful to keep you back online. So that goes with that as well. Lawful meetings, this is a Stacy thing. She does a great job of making sure the agenda is posted in the proper place. It's got to be seventy-two hours in advance for a regular meeting and twenty-four hours for a special meeting. And we always allow for public comments. Meeting locations have to be within the jurisdiction of the city. Teleconferencing is unique, right? This is a new, just up until today, in the last couple of years, we did almost everything virtual. That was an exception to the Brown Act that the governor passed during the COVID pandemic. That is still allowed, but you know, now that we think, now that we're in a place where we want the public to be involved and it's more welcoming in person than virtual, we now come back in. But if you do want to teleconference, you're still allowed to teleconference or Skype or Zoom in. You could still do that because we have this every thirty days, the city council has been extending that opportunity. But when hopefully soon the, what do they call it? The executive order regarding the COVID pandemic is over, if the governor declares that emergency over, you'll have to go back to the old days, which is you can teleconference in, but you got to tell the secretary in advance and we post your location. So people could, in theory, be there to watch you call in. Public comment, we're going to allow comments on agenda items. It's got to be within your jurisdiction. Something I like to say is it's not meant to be a Q and A, right? So people from the public come up, they are allowed to express their opinions, but a lot of times we'll see people, the public come and ask a bunch of questions. That's, they can do that, but you're not obligated to answer. And I'd also sometimes caution you, especially if it's the public comment on a non-agendized item at the beginning. It's not on the agenda, so they really shouldn't be engaging in that. The polite thing to do, actually, I tell chairs all the time is, thank you for your comment. You can certainly meet with Mr. Kempinar or Mr. Singer, Ms. Allison, Ms. Bermudas after the meeting and they'll explain that to you. So due process, this is, moving away from the Brown Act. And this is important when it comes to those quasi judicial meetings. There is a constitutional, right, if we're potentially not taking any life or liberty, but property is being discussed. And people have a due process right with, when it comes to their property rights being discussed. So how are we going to deal with that? First thing is noticing. We're going to make sure that they have the proper notice. And sometimes we'll notice people within a vicinity of a project to make sure they have a right to be here. It's also very important that we have an administrative record because they can appeal your decision to the city council, which then could be appealed by a writ of mandate to Sacramento Superior Court if they want. And so we're always, sometimes, we want there to be a clear and complete record of what the commission is deciding and what its basis for that decision was, as long as it's based on what they call us, well, there's a term up here in a minute. But it's, you have sufficient evidence to support your decision. So what is part of the administrative record? It talks about that. It's what happens here in the meeting, what's in the staff report, the oral statements by the public and members of the, and your comments. Sometimes what happens is you do a little bit of homework beforehand, you'll talk to people. What we ask, especially if it's a communication with an applicant, you should disclose that. We call those ex parte communications because you're sharing with your fellow commissioners, hey, I had a conversation with this person. This is what I gleaned from it. This is some information I think I should share with the rest of the commission. That way you're all now on the equal, we call it equal playing field. You all have the similar information as you make a decision about the item in front of you. So there's that term about substantial evidence. So your determination's fine. You know, a lot of these decisions are very discretionary. There's no right or wrong answer. And as long as your opinion or your decision is supported by quote unquote substantial evidence, it's not going to be overturned by a court. Could the city council overturn it? Sure, they could. You know, they're entitled to do that because they have their own opinions on things that may be divergent from the commission's. Due process is important about bias. We're looking for, this is a court case that cites that. We need decision makers that don't have a slant coming into it. You're all human beings. You're certainly going to have certain opinions about projects. But you have to be able to be open-minded to listen to the hearing that's here, listen to the applicant and other people and make a decision on what you've heard in this hearing room. If for whatever reason you feel like you can't do that, you should recuse yourself. There are certain laws that maybe you're aware of and I can counsel you on, when you already, if you're the person who's the applicant, you would recuse yourself. Or if you live within five hundred feet of a project, we tell you to recuse yourself. If it's your, you know, your employer who's asking for a license or whatever variance maybe come up, you should recuse yourself. If you have any questions about that, I just ask that you consult with me or Casey beforehand and we'll help give you some advice on whether it's worth recusing or is not necessary. Because a lot of things, people will say, well, I have an impact on me. Well, if it's an impact that spans on almost a big group of people, so like Auburn Boulevard update, you know, that is something that maybe is not very specific to you, but it impacts a lot of people. Even though it does impact you, that's not something that you need to, you know, like what do we call the street? There's street improvement plans that we sometimes will bring forth. So no prejudging the decision. I think that's fair to the applicant, to both sides. You have the right to, it talks about free speech at the bottom. You still have a right to give your opinion beforehand. We're just trying to make sure it's not so much that you can't come back and be fair to the applicant or to any either side. So how the process hearing usually works, you're going to have recusals. If you think there's a conflict, you're going to hear a staff report from us first. Then questions or comments on the staff report from you all. We then typically open the public hearing at that point to listen to members of the public and the applicant. We always, what we should do is, the applicant has an opportunity at the end to circle back and make concluding comments. Usually it's just a couple of minutes. And then you deliberate and you take some action. That could be an approval, denial, or maybe you want to continue the item because you need more information about it and we're going to continue to another future meeting. Findings are really important. So this is the, this is the, what comes from your deliberation, from your vote in the end. What we're trying to do to hold that sufficient record, so we have a sufficient evidence, is we need findings that are clear for anybody who wanted to look back on that. So you need to state, we're going to state the findings in exact terms. Again, this is, the staff's going to help with this. We're going to draft a lot of these things. We want to make sure those findings are supported by the substantial evidence based on the evidence in the record, what you've been told. Not based on something outside, but what you heard in this hearing room. It says it's got to be more than a scintilla of evidence. That's just a term that sometimes you see in the law about, it can't be just a minor supportive evidence. So we're going to help do that. We're going to help build a record that can help you, whatever your decision you make is going to be supported. And it's got to be a logic connection to the finding of the facts. I'm going to skip the rules of order motions. I think we do a good job of that. If you have any questions, sometimes parliamentary procedure can get a little wonky. And that, usually it's a, you know, someone makes a motion, it's seconded and we vote on. You know, what you could have happen is you have a motion and a second, something can happen called a counter motion. People can, before that motion is voted, a person can say, I have another motion I'd like to make. And if that second motion is seconded, we vote on that second motion before the first motion. Then, if you're aware of that or not, but that's something that does sometimes come up. If you have questions about parliamentary procedure, that's what I'm here to do and I can do it, you know, while we're here. Hey, Ryan, what do we, you know, can I make another motion or what if I want to go back? I realized I didn't like the motion I made. I want to fix that motion. You can do that as well. So conflicts of interest, I just kind of wanted to briefly talk about. Our Government Code ten ninety speaks to you can't have a financial interest in your decision. The Political Reform Act also is similar about conflicts of interest. These are what conflicts of interest, the minimum amounts are. So just because you have a little impact on something financially, it's actually got to be just a certain level, right? So if it's real property, you have an over two thousand dollar interest in that property. So whatever the fair market value is, if it's over two thousand dollars, that'd be considered enough to reach the level of needing to recuse yourself because of the economic interest. Also, if it's a source of income or you're a gift within the last twelve months from that, let's say landowner or developer, that's something you need to recuse yourself on. We already talked about bias and those things. Couple, couple of other things I wanted to mention. Well, Form seven hundreds, nobody likes doing those, right? It's annoying. It comes up every year, but it's important for the public to see what financial holdings you have, real property holdings or where you get your sources of income. They're public records. So if someone thinks, hey, I thought that commissioner had a conflict and should have recused him or herself. They can go ask to pull the Form seven hundred and see, well, where did they, you know, did they file that? And the FPPC does monitor that stuff. And if you don't file it on time, there are, you know, they will hound you for it. So it's important. And we as key staff members and consultants sometimes do have to file Form seven hundreds ourselves. Gift restrictions. Now, you know, it'd be nice if people were offering you gifts all the time, but I don't know that five hundred and twenty dollars worth of gifts are coming your way very often. If you, yes. Gifts over fifty dollars are required to be reported in your Form seven hundred. So if somebody who is going to be a party before you, gives you a gift, you need to report that. They can give you, they can give you a gift between, you know, up to five hundred and twenty dollars. Above that, they're not allowed to gift that kind of gift. But below it, if somebody wanted to say, hey, here are tickets to this event, right? And they're valued at two hundred dollars apiece, you can accept them, but you got to report it to your Form seven hundred. There are exceptions. We'll talk about in a minute. And that's like, you know, a family member or friend or if you have reciprocal gifts with somebody, that's not really considered. Mr. Schiller, do you have a question? Yeah, no problem. Especially if it's under fifty dollars, you're not even reporting that. So lunch is going to be under fifty dollars, but if dinner has a glass of wine and a few drinks, now all of a sudden it's a seventy-five dollar dinner somehow, you would need to report that. And this happens a lot of times at conferences. So if you go to League of California Cities conferences, sometimes consultants who want to do work with the city will say, hey, we're doing this event. Come with us or come to a dinner here. And you may not even be thinking about it, but that is a potential vendor for the city. You should report that. Good question. Misuse of public funds, I, you know, I don't think this is going to, for example, if you wanted to, for your own personal purpose, use government entities like our photocopy machine or even our phones, you're not supposed to use that. So if like your own personal campaigning, if you were, you don't do that on any kind of government nickel, that's a personal expense. Public Records Act, I do want to, I do want to touch on this one because I think it's, this is also a transparency law. Like the Brown Act, this one is about documents that the public is entitled to get. And our city clerk, Amy Van, gets Public Records Act requests fairly often from members of the public. A lot of times it's the media. So it could be the local newspaper, the Sentinel asking for, hey, I'd like to see the new contractor, the new city manager. Well, here you go. We turn that over. Or maybe they're going to say, I'd like to see email correspondence between Commissioner X and Mr. Kempinar about this project. Who knows why or what they're looking for, but that would definitely be a disclosable item. There are exceptions to that. Your communications with me are accepted. That's an attorney-client privilege. Communications about maybe how much we're going to purchase, you know, if you ask, what are we looking to purchase a site for? Well, that's confidential information that would hurt our position with the community or employment records. If you're asking, you can get records about employees, but the public cannot. You know, that would be an improper, an exception that they would have to the Public Records Act. But I think the teaching point is texts, emails, things that are in writing related to what you do as a commissioner is subject to the Public Record Act. And you should, anything you're willing to put in writing in those forums, you should be willing to say, if it's on the Sentinel, I'd be cool with that.
I was just going to say, Colleen would say that if you don't want to be on the front page of the B, don't put it in writing. Give me a call.
Right. Any questions or thoughts about that? I mean, I think it makes sense. The public should be informed and should have access to documents that we're doing. We're doing the public's business. And they, and we have a very quick turnaround. It's only ten days. So when we get a request, we've got in ten days to turn it around. What some people, city council members and commissioners will often ask, well, that text is on my personal cell phone. Or that's an email that I had on my Gmail account. It doesn't matter. There's a new law out of, or a new case out of the city of San Jose that they asked for personal emails in a council member's personal email account. But it definitely related to city business. So they're not entitled to your emails about picking up your kid from school or your dog or whatever. That's not disclosable, but your emails on a Yahoo, Gmail, whatever account could be if it's related to city business. Any thoughts?
Ryan, are they also regulating the, I'm just thinking back to social media again, with any type of comments through message or private messaging or something like that, I would imagine that would.
Yes, if they can get them. So, you know, I don't know exactly how long, like Snapchat is gone supposedly. I mean, I guess you could subpoena it or something, but there are types of records that are gone and we only provide records we have. So if we did ask for your emails or your texts or anything on social media that we no longer have because they've been discarded, deleted, whatever, they're just not, we can't, we only turn over what we have. Okay, well, that gets. Okay, well, that gets to the land use. The rest of these slides, I want, we'll just email them to you. You can ask questions if you have them later, but I wanted to give you this brief, I thought it was brief. It was, you know, overview on a few legal issues that come before the planning commission. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them now or you can call me tomorrow or email me if you want to follow up. Yes, sir.
One thing I get on myself, not that frankly we usually have too many no's on the planning commission, but something that frankly came up at a previous League of California Cities conference is something you touched on, is especially, I would think, especially when you say no to something, that you should say why you're saying no. You know, not just, you know, I don't like that. There needs to be a justification for the reason why you're saying no. And so I keep telling myself that. The other thing about the telephonic meetings, I was on another public meeting the other night and one of the commissioners called in. It was on a Zoom, but he was calling into the Zoom and his picture wasn't up or there was no. And I thought, I thought frankly that was strange because, I mean, I mean, I know his voice. I know him. So, I mean, I know his voice, but it could be anybody. I mean, you know, I just thought that was rather strange that that was allowed, frankly.
It is allowed? It is allowed. I don't, I don't prefer it either. If I'm a constituent and I want to see your face, even if it's on Zoom, I want to see that it's really you and see kind of your reaction to things. So if you're calling in, I think it really inhibits the public from having a real assessment of what you're all about and making sure it really is Tom Schiller on that line, right?
I started to hear splashing. I think he was floating around in the pool with.
That's probably why he was on video is because he was in Maui or something, you know? And we do, in your first comment, yeah, we prefer and we want to have a record. So if you're voting no or even voting yes, an explanation is good. I understand a lot of them are kind of pro forma. We're just all voting aye and we move on. That's probably fine, but especially if it's a contested item where you think there could be an appeal and somebody is here really pushing for a project that you're not supporting or even if you're supporting, the record, you know, should be at least explained as to what your position is and your rationale for it.
I have a question about that.
We always put findings in the staff report that are recommended, that kind of basic findings, but you can always add to those or, and if what you're recommending is contrary to what staff's recommending, we'll ask you and we'll probe for you, why don't you want this? And so we really need to try to get that down because if we are sued, that's what they go by.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question on that. So are you stating that, to me, as we're having a discussion before we make a vote, I think positions are being expressed, right?
Yes.
So once the vote comes, are you saying you want us to take the time out of that vote and say, this is why?
No, not necessarily. Just during the discussion is fine.
Okay.
Yeah, because otherwise through each seven, if you don't just say yes and here's why or no and here's why. Hopefully before you voted, you've articulated that position and expressed your deliberative process that way.
Right, so people.
You can do it during your vote. If you were quiet throughout the whole thing and now it's time to vote, you could, you could explain it, but you don't have to wait for that moment.
Okay, thank you.
And sometimes we'll ask for direction and we may ask you to continue the meeting if we need to do some more digging to come up with findings, if that was the case.
Okay, any more questions? Thank you, Ryan. That was very informative. And just to confirm, the slides will be coming to each one of us individually to review at less lightning speed.
Yeah.
Yes, I will email them to you all tomorrow. Wonderful, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is planning manager comments and that is going to be Planning Commissioners Academy.
So I know four of you are going to the academy. Allison's going to go as well. So on the sixteenth, she will take you out to dinner somewhere. And so I think she's working on logistics of that, so stay tuned for those of you that are going. If you can carpool, that's great. Saves on parking and everything. Just a reminder to, any receipts, make sure you get a picture of it. Can't have alcohol in it. You can't have the tip, but make sure you get a picture of the line item that shows. Otherwise, finance will come hunt you down, so. I think that was it. If those are going, I think it'll be valuable and you may get a repeat of some of the stuff you heard tonight, but I think it's all good stuff.
Wonderful. Any other?
No additional items.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all for coming and your time, staff, and your presentations. And it's very good to be back with all of you. And I look forward to hopefully more, right? Okay, meeting adjourned at eight fifteen PM.